Good evening, everybody and welcome.
Yeah.
Good, Chad. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this regularly scheduled Waterville Planning Board meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the August 27th meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Abstention?
Yeah, one abstention.
Item number two, disclosure of conflict of interest. Do any board members have a conflict on any of the votes that they're going to take tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on to number three.
I'm gonna abstain from... I don't know how to say it. Number five. Industrial Park. Reptloo Investments.
Okay. Item number three. BD Solar Farm LLC is requesting final plan review for 1.99 megawatt solar farm at 244 Country Road.
Good evening, I'm Sean Thies with Haley Ward, representing the applicant. So, as you noted, it's a proposing a 1.99 megawatt solar project off of County Road. It's referred to as a Holmes Farm Solar. The area, there's a 10-acre area within the fence line is the footprint of the solar project. County Road is here at the bottom of the sheet.
Is there a way to zoom in on that a little bit, or maybe like full screen?
The next sheet is zoomed in a little bit more. See if I can... I can close that.
There we go, thank you.
Might as well move this over to... There. So here's County Road at the bottom of the sheet. Our access road into the site comes into here. A gate here in the fence. And the road comes into the equipment pad in the blue rows here are the panels. There is... Whoops, sorry. Underground power from the equipment pad out to a riser pole and then the series of poles with the overhead line where it comes out and connects at the street. This project was in a contract zone for solar. And as part of that contract, there is requirements for these plantings all the way around the fence line. And then also a double row of plantings on the side here to help screen the project from the water on that side of the project. I spoke with the deputy fire chief this morning. He had some proposed conditions on the project. Most of them were really straightforward. The one that I discussed with him was access roads to within 200 feet of all areas of the array. What we discussed was extending this road up to the fence line. And then also having roads that come around up each side of the site. Those would be vegetated gravel roads, so it would have a gravel base, but then built up with a top layer of loam and gravel to seed that. So we aren't increasing the amount of impervious area that we're proposing, but still providing a road that they can access with the fire trucks. Other than that, the conditions that he had were minor and not an issue as far as affecting the design at all. Other than that, I guess I would just be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Any questions?
Sean, I have a question. Are the additional access roads that you just discussed, are those included with the findings of fact? Or are those yet to be included?
They're yet to be included. We didn't have time to modify the plan. And I'm hoping where they're not, no new impervious area, that we can just work that out with the deputy chief. And then have either the planning staff or code just approve that final plan.
Ann?
I spoke with deputy chief today, and he'd like to see that plan, the revised plan, before he signs off.
Okay. Any other questions?
How many gates are there going to be around the fence to allow wildlife to escape?
So, we don't have additional gates to allow wildlife to escape. What we'd have is on each side, this note here. Blow that up. But there's a note on each side to, we're gonna build a berm on the inside of the fence. That's a couple of feet shorter than the top of the fence for them to climb up the berm and then jump over.
Great.
So there is, we may end up with additional gates. Per discussions with the deputy fire chief for some of their access.
Sure.
But currently, there's just the one gate where the access road comes in.
Thanks.
Okay. So, Ann, would it be best to postpone to a date certain to get revised plans to approve?
That's what the chief was recommending.
Okay. And the next planning board is the 10th?
It's not until October 8th, and at this point, we don't have a quorum. We're down one member, and we have two maybes.
Okay. So how should we?
Can we postpone to a date certain and just hope that we get somebody?
My preference would be, and we discussed what we're gonna change. If the board could approve it with condition that we get approval from the fire chief. I guess if there's any major changes other than what we just talked about, we could come back to the board.
And what's the board's, I guess, does anybody have any thoughts on that?
I don't have a problem.
Yeah, I mean...
I don't have a problem. I think making them wait that much time just to get them first is excessive.
The draft findings and facts?
When are you hoping to start construction on this? Before winter?
Potentially. I don't know exactly the schedule, but I know they want to get it approved so they can start planning for construction.
I'm hesitant to approve plans that aren't complete myself, but...
Well, and that's true, because if the chief isn't okay with gravel, then you're gonna have to come back for another review.
Yeah.
So...
So, excuse me, the chief did say, deputy chief did say, he's okay with the gravel covered with the loam and seeded. But he wanted to see the roads on the plan. Where are they going to be?
Yeah, I assume so that he can make sure that they will be able to get to everything. Well, I'll make a motion that we postpone to October 8th. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Was that Tom, I saw?
He tied.
Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Want to oppose? Okay. Item number four. First Church is requesting rezoning for 3, 5, and 7 Park Street.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is James Motz Leoni. I'm an attorney appearing on behalf of the applicant. Forgive me as I present materials the old-fashioned way. Again, I can guarantee there won't be technical difficulties. So, just for reference.
Could you say your name again, please?
Sure. It's James Motz Leoni. This is an excerpt of...
You're gonna have to be closer to that part.
Strike the balance. This is an excerpt of the present zoning map, which identifies that the property that is a budding First Church building is right on the boundary between the residential Z zone, residential D zone, which is marked as this whole, this sea of green, and commercial A zone, which is this sea of red. Thank you. What First Church is requesting is to be returned to the zone to the more restrictive of these two options. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad.
You spared me from doing the hunch. We're looking to, we're asking to be put back into the zone that is the more restrictive of these two options. We're looking to be treated on the same conditions as everyone else in this neighborhood. Now, presently, First Church is subject to a rather unique contract zone that was created before First Church acquired the property and without the church having adequate notice of what this contract zone entailed. And I can speak more to that. The, presently, what is required of the church is to maintain its existing structures. One structure as either a beauty salon and spa, or a professional office, or a residence. Another structure as a duplex. And another area of the property as a parking lot. As First Church has attempted to work through this type of restriction, it requested leave to remove the residential building. And that request was denied. It was deemed a change of the contract zone. In other words, that the obligation was to maintain that duplex dwelling. This land use requirement imposes a substantial burden on the church. And the reason why is because, first and foremost, the church is seeking to provide handicap access through the rear of the building at a location where handicap parishioners can be dropped off via a car. There's currently a ramp in the front, but there's no place, if you can picture that area, it's lawn on a busy Elm Street. There's no place that parishioner can be dropped off where they can walk up the ramp or roll up the ramp. And that has caused a significant impairment for individuals that are attempting to access the church. The primary objective of this development effort is to be able to lay out a ADA compliant handicap ramp through a back door that will be basically created and expanded upon. If the obligation is to maintain an existing duplex and operate it as a residence, we can't do that. Additionally, if the obligation is to maintain these existing buildings, we can't navigate traffic around this property in a way that we can use it. In other words, we're being asked to either operate these buildings as they are for what they are, or sell the property. And that in and of itself is a substantial burden that's imposed upon the church. Now, the specific development plans that the church has in mind are still being developed. And that's in part because we don't have sufficient information, given the zoning that's available. We need to have clearer insight into the restrictions that are upon us. And then, you know, the intention is to develop plans that, in full compliance of what that allows. And again, the request before you is to recommend that First Church be returned into the more restrictive of the two options of that community. And with that, I welcome your questions or further discussion about the application.
Any questions for the board?
I have some questions.
Yeah.
So, you mentioned that your client was not aware of the contract zone when they purchased the properties?
That's correct.
Because it's on the deed, right?
It's not on the deed. It is not on the deed. There's a restrictive covenant on the deed. And that restrictive covenant is that they shall not sell flowers. It relates to the history of when it was a funeral home. There is no restrictive covenant on the deed whatsoever that relates to this contract zone. So there was no record notice of it. There was no disclosure of it from the prior owner. And to the extent that there was awareness that this was subject to contract zoning, I note that this particular contract zone is very unique. Traditionally, contract zones are, property can be used for all purposes of the underlying zone plus an additional exceptional purpose subject to certain restrictions. This has been interpreted differently, essentially excluding all of the other usage that's permitted under residential D except for a beauty salon, or a spa, or a professional office. And that unique dynamic of excluding all of the baseline uses of the residential D zone was, you know, not reasonably foreseeable to anyone who comes and says, oh, this is subject to contract zoning.
Excuse me?
Yeah, Ann.
The contract zone is, the base zone of the contract is commercial A, not residential D.
Well, all the more reason, given that residential D is even more restrictive than commercial A, you know, we're here before you, asking for the most restrictive of the alternatives.
Yeah, I mean, I'll say, to be fair, all contract zones are unique. I wouldn't say this one's unique. All of them are. We deal with this a lot. So typically, we have parties coming to us while they're under contract, trying to buy a property to get zoning changed, not after the fact. So, for me personally, I look at this request as, that's how I'm thinking of it. It doesn't really matter to me that the property was purchased and the client wasn't aware. It's, you're asking for that to be changed. So we need to do our due diligence, so... Which is really reviewing the comprehensive plan. So, that's our requirement.
Agreed, agreed. And to that extent, to the extent that the entire zoning of this community is consistent with the comprehensive plan, this request is inherently consistent with the comprehensive plan.
So what's the status of the buildings today?
They are, they are, one of the buildings is being used for storage for the church, and other buildings are not being used.
Would you say that they are in the same status that they were when they were purchased?
I can't speak to that. I don't have sufficient information to speak to that.
Okay. Because we've, it's been said publicly that these buildings are uninhabitable. But it's my understanding they were not uninhabitable when, or at least very shortly before they were purchased. So, I'm just, I, we know, because again, it's public record, that a demolition permit was sought after, so...
As I've represented here tonight.
What's that?
As I've represented that, I mean, there's nothing that's...
Right, but you also just said that the development plans haven't been finalized, so...
Correct. I'm trying to explain to you why we don't have a development plan before you. This is what we're planning to build, because we're not at that stage yet.
Is the intent to tear down those buildings?
The intent, most definitely, is to tear down the building that is, that's blocking that back entryway. As you can see, the buildings here.
Yep, no, I'm aware of it. I drive up down that street.
The apartment building that's further back from Park Street, right?
Correct.
The one that's further back?
We cannot build a handicap accessible ramp into an area of the building that is, that is, that can be adapted to it without that space. We cannot facilitate cars driving to drop off handicap parishioners without that space. That is the primary purpose of what we're doing. And any restriction that says that we have to maintain buildings that are not historical is essentially, is impairing the church's ability to deliver that basic function to its parishioners.
Are you familiar with the comprehensive plan, Waterville's? Have you read it?
I have not read it recently.
Okay. Specifically, chapter 13 is where the goals and policies are. And there's a lot of goals and policies around housing. We're in the same state that we were in 10 years ago, where we have a lack of housing. And, you know, from the purview of this request coming to us before those properties were acquired and then made uninhabitable, I know that I personally would have looked at the comprehensive plan and said, this does not line up with any of the goals and policies. This detracts from multiple goals and policies.
But with all due respect, that presumes the answer to the question of what's gonna be done in the future. I mean, it presumes that it would never be used for such purposes in the future. This is the, under its present ownership, it's looking to be put to its highest and best use. And that is providing service to allow, to facilitate the religious exercise of the members of that church.
Yeah, I mean, the city didn't tell the church to buy those properties either.
I understand. But to impose the requirement that they shall be maintained in their existing structure based upon a fairly arbitrary contract zone, that half of it hasn't even been performed. All the provisions of this contract zone that relate to screening, for example, were never performed and has never been followed up on. There was no issue with that.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
So, the current contract zone identifies that screening shall be installed, and it shall reach a defined height within certain years. And that was done by the prior owner. That was never done. There was, I think it was required to be installed by, you know, within six months. But similarly, demolition is an issue for the code officer. Like, that's a question that comes before the code officer, not the planning board.
Right, except there's restrictions in place that prevent it because of an ordinance that the city council passed.
I understand. And that is the ordinance that we're here to address, because it has, you know, the alternative is that this church community has no alternative but to deny access to their parishioners and sell the property. So, based upon a land, a zoning decision of the community, the alternative is either become a residential landlord or sell the property. And that in and of itself is a substantial burden on the exercise of this religious establishment.
I guess I'm failing to see why that's the scenario here. You said that there's already a...
You said that there's already a handicap ramp, and the only scenario that you've given us is that there's no handicap ramp accessible for these people, and that's why they would have to sell this property, but if there's already a ramp, then I'm, I'm failing to see the argument.
The argument is that currently, the ramp fronts on Elm Street.
Okay.
There is a large patch, there's a large curb, and an extended patch of grass.
Okay, so, could that not be turned into some type of a driveway? That they could park a car to unload those handicaps?
So, this was, this was requested. Years ago, the church requested to, to create a driveway in the front of their property in order to provide a direct connection to this, to this ramp, and that request was denied. So, in response to that request, they then sought to find another arrangement. They tried to negotiate for rights over the, the adjacent driveway, which couldn't be, couldn't be reached. They, they then looked to-
Are you talking about on Park Street? I'm sorry.
I'm talking about opposite of Park Street. I'm talking about-
The adjacent driveway?
Well, I guess, I mean, really, I'm talking about, I'm talking here.
Okay. All right.
And so, because there's, there's, there's another, there's a driveway that's here, and-
And a courtyard right to the side of that street.
Correct. So, at that point in time, when the effort was, let's put in a new driveway that comes here, and comes straight to the ramp, then, it's like, we can solve, we can solve this problem this way. And the town expressed that that wouldn't work, the city expressed that that wouldn't work. And frankly, that's, that's somewhat-
And do you know why they said it wouldn't work?
I don't, I don't know, but I can, I can understand that it's understandable, because it means that traffic would be turning out onto Elm Street, like, within 50 feet of that traffic light, which I imagine can be, could be really difficult, and so, that, that does make sense. So, in turn, we tried to negotiate a different arrangement, because if we could get access under one of those, that private road, then we could effectively create a, a turnaround. That couldn't be done. So, we looked to the next best alternative, which was to acquire the property that was behind them for that purpose. So, in reliance upon this effort, we started at the place, saying, how do we fix this independently? It wasn't just, you know, let's just change things, it's, how do we work with what we have? That unfortunately was, was unsuccessful. And in reliance upon kind of the next steps, now we're here with a piece of property, we're trying to make, serve the purpose, and being told that we have to maintain an existing dwelling in order to, to foster the need for housing.
When were these requests denied?
I don't, I don't know, and I've, you know, we've, we've requested records. I understand that it was in a period of, you know, 10 years ago, 10 years plus ago.
Well, that was before the current church acquired this property.
No, so, this request was for the, the church property. So, if you, so this property, so, so we've got the crosshatch area, which is the area that we're discussing and relating to zoning. Property just next to it is the historic church building, which has been there since the early 1800s, I believe, and the front of that has got this, this yard space, and that application was on this lot, seeking to, to build the driveway to the existing ramp that's in the front of the building.
Sort of a courtyard almost, between that private road and the church itself, right?
Correct. We're, we're trying to utilize that space.
So, who made this request for this, to utilize off of Elm Street? This is the first I've ever heard of that request being made, so I'm just curious.
I, so, I, I understand that that was made, that that was made several years ago. We've, we've requested all of the records related to the church's submissions, and haven't received anything back. The challenge is that, you know, the current church leadership has been there for, you know, is relying upon the representations of, of the church community, and, you know, it's been, it's been built upon as that way.
I just wanted to correct something that you said.
Please.
I was on the planning board in 2020, and when the contract zone was approved, and I was at the meeting, a member of the, senior member of the church stood up and was very pleased that this was being contract zoned, and that the purchaser of the property, who I believe wound up selling it to you, he was also in attendance, and they were both very pleased that this was going through as a contract zone at the time, it was in 2020. So, they did have some knowledge, they had knowledge that there was a contract zone with restrictions, they were at the planning board meeting.
I, I understand that. I would, I would just note, one thing that's inherent about any institution, is that leadership changes. At the point in time when the leadership that, that made the efforts to negotiate an alternate driveway arrangement, and then, in lieu of that, made arrangements to acquire the property next door, was, is different leadership than the leadership that was engaged in, in 2020. And so, the individuals that made this decision had no personal knowledge about, about these circumstances, and certainly had no personal knowledge that the contract zone was, was written in such a way that excluded the underlying uses of the, of, of the existing zone, of the base zone.
I actually don't think that's the case, but I'm, I'm pretty sure the current pastor was in that meeting. I also say, I did pull up in the registry of deeds, the purchase, and Exhibit B clearly says, "This real estate hearing conveyed is restricted from being used for a hair salon, barber shop, funeral home, flower shop, cemetery, or other funeral floral cremary services, merchandise, and restricted covenant of the land."
Nothing about that says, "Shall be used to operate existing duplexes into perpetuity." Nothing says that. Because the, what the plans that First Church has in mind are in full satisfaction of the language of that covenant.
What are the plans?
As I've described, to, to facilitate a-
A handicap.
A handicap accessibility, and, you know, surrounding areas that, that allow that to be, to be utilized.
This proposed handicap access, which floor of the church buildings is accessing? Is this the basement? Is it for the first floor? Where is it?
It's for the first floor.
First floor.
Which requires a, which requires a, a ramp of the, the appropriate slope, the ADA compliant slope, in order to reach.
And, and how are people accessing the first floor now if they're handicapped? Are they going on Park Street?
They are, they are crossing the grass in the front of the building, in order to reach the ramp that's in front of the building, or they are coming basically around the funeral home building, down the sidewalk, around the entire church, turning at the stop light, coming back onto the sidewalk, and, and reaching the ramp on the opposite corner of the building.
This, this past Sunday, I was, I was driving down Park Street, and, and there was a car stopped on Park Street with handicapped plates, and they were letting off people right by the door, by the steps on Park Street.
On the corner.
Well, on the corner, they were right, right on Park Street, right by the, right where the property line is, for the, for the, for the contract zone. That's, that's where they were letting off, yes.
Well-
Where's the, where's the current ramp on the, can you just point to, just to, for these?
The current ramp is in the front, here.
Yep, and it faces Elm Street?
Correct. And so, if someone's parked on Park Street, that only gets them-
Thirty percent of the way there.
Sometimes, I, I understand, sometimes you may see cars are jumping over the granite curb in order to get their people a little bit closer, and then having to finagle backing out into what is frankly, a very dangerous circumstance for cars to be pulling out over the curb and into traffic. That's what we're trying to avoid. Simply to allow these people to go to church without having to take such elaborate means to get there.
Can you show me where the entrance is on the back side, where you want to build the ramp?
I'm sorry, that entrance is here.
Okay. And if you don't have mobility issues, and you're just walking, can you get in through that door? Is it, is it on, is there no blockade? There's, you can just walk in, correct? Like, you could, could you walk in there right now, from that entrance?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that question.
Do you know, Jeff?
I'm Jeff Allen from Eddie Hudson Engineers. The back of the church currently has no door. When we put in the handicap entrance, we're going to have to take out part of a wall, put the door in to be at the top of the ramp. Currently, as, as you mentioned, coming in the side is seven or eight steps to go up, to get into the, the level, so, you know, parishioners that are still capable of climbing stairs can do that. But we have two or three people, this one lady that always shows up that has no legs, so she has to go around front, she has, her son helps her go around front, around all the way around the building, up the ramp, and then enters that way. So, it's, it is at best awkward, it is, you know, at worst cruel to push people out there in February to do that.
My dad has mobility issues. He, he's not in a wheelchair, but he can't walk from here to that door without having problems, so, I understand that.
I say, we, we explored trying to connect the ramp through that side door.
Mm-hmm.
Because of, because of the ramp, because of the, the slope of the higher, kind of that, that large foundation building, it's, it's really steep. And even if we were to go sideways, it would require a, a bend, which then puts us beyond our, our property line. That's not, that's not a feasible alternative either. But suffice to say, the church has, has gone to fairly great lengths to try and find alternatives that work, and we're, we're left with, with no, no feasible alternative.
Any other questions from the board? I guess we can open it up to the public.
Thank you.
Yep.
Can I speak?
Yeah, absolutely.
Raphael Chek, one of the neighbors on Park Place, and we feel, as neighbors, we feel bad about the burden that the church has had to take on, but we do also feel that this is self-inflicted, because I do distinctly remember that both the current pastor and Mr. Mitchell were at the planning board meeting. It wasn't here, had some different faces, it was behind the high school in the technical college, or I don't know what it is called, but I remember precisely, it was the same meeting where the Colby Music Center was approved, and they were both there, and I find it a little bit difficult to believe that they were not aware that there were restrictions on this property, because it came up in the meeting, and I think it was, Ann Beveridge was already there, who said that the zoning ordinance did not need to be changed, because the original zoning ordinance that had been in place before was flexible enough to accommodate the transformation of these buildings into apartment buildings, which happened. There were five beautiful apartments in there. Mr. Mitchell did a very nice job renovating them, he put on new roofs in, I want to say, in the spring or summer of 2020, or maybe going into 21. He sometime in 2023, in the fall, decided that he wanted to sell the property, so he gradually dismissed the renters, and he made the agreement with the church, and because he must have known that the church wanted to, basically demolish the buildings, gutted them, as we have heard. So, just very briefly, there is, there was a town council request that we consider a compromise. The church made a very minor compromise that, in the town council immediately said, does not deserve to name compromise, so, that was dismissed right away. I think that there is room for compromise. I want, just want to briefly explain our concerns. Housing shortage is a huge one. We see all the unhoused people in the park right across from the property, hanging out there day and night, and of course, walking all over town. And removing housing, especially just renovated housing, as recently as 2020, seems to us really, really, really the wrong way to go. A larger parking lot under our windows, not exactly what we are happy about. It's a largely residential zone, it's a historical district, and all but name. Some of these houses are quite old. There is, I think, room for compromise. I can't say we would be happy about it, but we do respect the church's need for, or desire, I don't know to what extent, it's need for handicap access from the back. That can be done by demolishing the smaller of the two buildings, and getting access from there. Granted, often it needs to be, a door needs to be opened. We had some concerns about Egress. Park Place, on which we live, is a very narrow road that does not have sidewalks, so, a larger parking lot that exits onto Park Place would create more traffic there during the high period of church frequency. But I think there's room for compromise. The town council had asked the church to come to us with a compromise. We have not heard anything, but I want to point out, we are willing to consider a compromise. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody know how frequently the parking lot would be used? Is it strictly a Sunday morning thing, or are we talking like, seven days a week? Unfortunately, you'll have to come to the microphone, I'm sorry. It's broadcast.
I understand, I understand. We haven't, we haven't done a traffic study, I mean, that's going to lay out the specific uses, but I think you can, you can reasonably rely that it is, relates to church events, which are on Sunday, and occasionally, you know, on, on daytimes and evenings during the week. It's, it's not a, you know, it's, it's not a 20, 24/7 kind of arrangement that would happen, for example, when that, when the existing zoning allows for a parking lot to facilitate a day spa. It would be less, less usage, daytime usage than that, I think you can reasonably presume.
How many parishioners do you have in your church?
I, I, I don't know the answer to that question.
Jeff, do you know, roughly? Like ballpark?
A couple hundred.
Couple hundred. Okay, I think we can safely assume that there won't ever be 200 people at a, at a beauty salon, coming and going all at the same time, right?
Under, understood, but the, the point being that in terms of the, that all day, all, all hours of the day type of usage, you're, you're talking about a circumstance that's, that's very different than that.
Is the church's traffic usage, the trip ends, is it, is it coming, is it originating strictly solely from the, the main church building, or there, is there other, other sources of people, other buildings?
Yeah, where's the flow of traffic with the people?
Is it all coming from the one church, the main church building? Or there are other buildings involved?
Pardon me, I, I don't fully understand your question. I mean, we, I mean, believe that we're talking about moving people from the world into the church, and from the church out to the world.
They're all just going into the church? There's no other building, you're not planning to use the other building that's on the site for additional trips, other uses, other traffic generating uses?
Again, we, we don't have, we don't have particular, we don't have specific plans, but we don't have any other, we don't have any other plan in mind that would, that would be inviting to, you know, parishioners to, to come to use this spot. I hope I answered, I hope, I answered your question.
Yeah, whoops, not.
Oh, so, I, I don't know what the max occupancy of the church building is, maybe you could elucidate that for me. I, what is, how many people are we talking about? Max 100? Is that 100?
I don't, I don't know what the max usage is, but I, I understand that our present attendance is well below what the max, what the max usage is.
It's a pretty big church. So beautiful, I love it. It's a beautiful church.
All right.
Did you want to say something, Jeff?
Yeah.
No. I think that this is one of the hardest parts of having a, a building that was built in the 1800s, and life that has continued on around it, obviously, when the building was built, we're taking into account, you know, dozens and dozens of cars coming and going. This is a tough one.
Can I have the one?
Yes, anybody else who wants to speak, please?
Okay, can you hear me? Hi, I'm Larkin Silverman. I'm a resident of Three Park Place, so my husband is Robert, Bobby Dombrowski. We are the Butters. I'd fully agree with what Raphael just said. We, as neighbors, are in really good, effective, constant communication, which I would like to really reinforce. It feels like that's been lacking on our end as neighbors with the church. And I truly do appreciate the invitation to come here tonight, and hearing from their attorney, and seeing the back of, anyway, the little bit of plan that we do have, because it, it truly is not, it does not feel fair. I understand the conundrum that they're in. I think, I'm concerned that, why then is the disagreement, why are we, as neighbors, caught in the crosshairs? Why is it not between the former owner, Bill Mitchell, and the current owner? With regards to what will be done with these buildings in the future, I mean, as Raphael said, we can see the homeless and the houselessness crisis right here on our front steps in the park across our street. I am a frequent pedestrian. We walked here tonight, that's why we purchased our home at Three Park Place. I, as a pedestrian, absolutely understand access issues. I'm blessed to not have to use mobility devices, but in the winter, I'm walking at 5:30 in the morning to come downtown to open the yoga studio. I'm sliding and slipping on ice in that parking lot and on that sidewalk, so I can only imagine how much harder it must be if you need a wheelchair or have limbs missing. So anything that we can do to find compromise for accessibility, I think we all are in support of and incredibly passionate about. I have a small child in that neighborhood. I have a dog. Just this morning, all the neighbors convened on a neighbor's dog who got loose and was out for many hours, so anything we could do that's a traffic calming measure, that can create some sort of driveway on Elm Street, I think is a fantastic idea. It'll make the entire neighborhood safer for everyone. But largely, it feels very antithetical to the principles of a neighborhood, of which this church community is a part, to deliberately render housing uninhabitable in service of parking more cars. If the actual issue, which I hope it is, is getting an accessible entrance and ramp for parishioners, I am 1,000% in support of that. So is every single person, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, so is every resident of Park Place. I just do not want to see that used as a convenient excuse when we're actually just trying to get more cars parked in more spaces. That doesn't make the neighborhood safer, and does not preserve our neighborhood at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Hi, my name is Scott Beal. I'm currently a member of the Housing Committee and the Comprehensive Planning Committee, and my primary purpose for being involved with those committees was to help the school. I want to see more students in the school. I want to see a tax base expanded with more housing. And the key to all of this is more housing. And I don't envy you, your job, this is a tough one, but we've got a plan in place with the comprehensive plan to, to try to put more emphasis on housing. The Housing Committee's tried to come up with some creative ways to do that. I, I think that we need to err on the side of housing as a general concept. Hopefully, a compromise can be worked out, but, you know, if you can't, then I think housing should be the primary priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Hi, everyone. I'm Bobby Dombrowski, Three Park Place. My lovely wife, Larkin, has already brought up some great points. I just wanted to add a few more here, similar to what this gentleman just said. I, I think it sort of comes down, as we see it, like the value of the neighborhood, the building, and its potential versus 14 additional parking spots. I think that 14 additional parking spots is if they crammed as many cars as they could in there. I don't think legally they would be able to get 14, so we're talking about demoing two buildings to potentially get max 14 parking spots. It's not going to solve their parking crisis, that has been discussed. It's been admitted that's not going to solve their parking crisis, so, you know, we're, we're trying to come at this as, as neighbors looking to come up with a plan and a solution, and it seems like the, the problem that the church has is access. And we've tried to meet them fairly, at face value, at that, with that point. So if it, if access is what they need, which I, I feel that they're disingenuous, because again, they don't plow their sidewalks, they don't help anyone, it doesn't seem like they actually care about access. But if that's what they're saying it is, then knock down the small building, put in a ramp, leave, leave the giant building that is on the street, that sort of creates an atmosphere for the neighborhood, it adds to the streetscape. I know the minister has said that there is nothing that they can think of a need for that building for. I do know they have an after-school program. It seems like that building could be a perfect use for an after-school program. It has been informed by another neighbor that the minister was looking at purchasing another building in the neighborhood for a parsonage. I don't understand why this building could not be a parsonage. If he was interested in buying another building in the neighborhood for a parsonage, you own a building. Turn that into a parsonage. Knock down the smaller building and put in the ramp. Everyone in the neighborhood can agree with that. Again, we don't want to lose any buildings, but if it really, it truly is about access, we are all on board to support that goal, if that truly is their goal. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Okay, any other comments from the, comments or questions from the board? Oh, yeah?
May I briefly respond to this?
Yeah, you have to come up to the...
I would, I would just like to clarify, I think, I mean, there's been representations that, there's been efforts to acquire other properties in the neighborhood. That's false. There's been, I think there's, there's been a representation that the present pastor of First Church attended meetings related to the contract zone? That's false. This pastor did not attend meetings related to the contract zone. Now, what is being, what's being discussed here is that, this isn't a, this is not a question of solving the, the housing challenge versus accommodating, you know, a fleeting desire to, to use the property differently. The unfortunate challenge is that, you know, to say we choose housing over handicap accessibility is not just to pick a winner and a loser between those two very important ideals, but additionally, it is to say to this private property owner, you shall do this with your property and nothing else. And that, in, in the context of a church community, is, is a substantial burden. Now, you've, you've heard, I've, I've referenced the substantial burden that's, that's, that this zoning imposes on, on multiple occasions, and that's in part because federal law imposes a, a unique protection for church communities. And that is, that... The government may not impose a land use regulation in a manner that imposes a substantial burden on the religious exercise of a person or an institution, unless it's the least restrictive means of furthering the government's objective. If the objective is to promote housing, then to say to the church, you shall maintain this building as a residence, even though you are not in the operation of, of residential space, is not the least restrictive means, particularly when the current contract zone says, one corner shall be used as a parking lot, one corner shall be used as a day spa, another building shall be used as a duplex. That's the challenge.
Well, it says the current parking lot can be used for parking.
Sam, may I?
Yeah.
So, sir, you are an attorney, none of us are, and you just basically told us that we have to make a decision in favor of your client based on law. I would like to table this, I would like to motion that we table this, so that we can discuss this with the city's attorney.
I will second that, because I sent Billy a question today that I haven't gotten.
So we can table this until October 8th?
Okay.
Could, could I respectfully request it be continued to the following meeting? I will be out of the state of Maine on business travel on October 7th and 8th.
Yes.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, so that would tentatively be...
We don't have a quorum for that meeting?
He said he'd be away for that meeting anyway.
No, right, for the, the, the meeting after.
It would be the 22nd.
We haven't discussed the 22nd yet.
For the, the 7th, or excuse me, the 8th is the meeting that I'm, that I'm unavailable to attend.
Right, so October 22nd.
So he's asking for the 22nd?
Oh, okay, the 22nd of October. You're not asking for our next meeting, which would have been...
Or, I mean, alternatively, certainly the, the next meeting in September, I'm also, also available.
Understand.
Is there a quorum for the 22nd, Ann?
We had, David Ma, made the motion, you seconded it, and so we need to vote to postpone to a date certain, so we don't have to re-advertise.
I know, I'm just asking if the 22nd could work.
Oh, only if, only if we have a quorum.
Yeah.
Good question. All right, so I need to know who's available on the 22nd?
I am. Okay.
I'm a maybe. Okay, so five?
So we would have five.
Okay, we need five for quorum, so we are, we are set then.
Ann, can I ask that, prior to that meeting, we also get all of the minutes related to the meetings with discussion of around these contract zones?
Yes.
Ann, would you mind emailing Ann the, what you spoke about?
The, the federal ordinance?
Yes.
Federal, federal statute?
Yep.
I'm happy to do so, but to, to make a clear record of it tonight, that is 42 USC, section 2000 CC.
Thank you.
Okay, so all those in favor of postponing to the 22nd of October?
So that's unanimous?
Okay. The last item on the agenda, agenda is Rhett Lou Investments LLC is requesting revisions to the Waterville Industrial Park. Do we have a representative from Rhett Lou? Hello, Jeff?
Good evening. Jeff Allen from Ahehod's. This is the existing industrial park. This is Industrial Road that goes up here, goes out toward, the Elks is out on the end here. And Rhett Lou is requesting that these four lots, I think there, can't read the numbers, this one, this one, this one, and this one, would be combined into a single lot, which would become Lot 8. They're doing this because there's a buyer that's expressed interest in buying all four properties, and they need to have it combined into one lot before they do that. So, in doing so... Excuse me, I need to load one more drawing. This is what the resulting larger lot would look like over here, down here. In doing so, the road that serves these back lots would be absorbed into the lots on either side, and so it would create one large lot. This lot proposes to have their entrance off of Industrial Road, but it would still leave the existing paper street that was created for the subdivision here to allow access for this property. So that's, that's it. It's basically just merging lots together and creating a large lot for a, a large development that we've talked about, but I'm not at liberty to say who it is yet.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Jeff, why, in the combined lot, did they move the access driveway? Why did they relocate it?
They just, there's a huge wetland right there. Where the paper street is, is all wetland, so to avoid disturbing a ton of wetlands, we just moved the, the access road over to the side next to the existing, I think it's a New England telephone, New England telephone building lot. So, you know, right in here is where the new entrance will go.
So it's wetlands, and there's also a sewer easement? Is that with the paper road?
There's a sewer easement, there's a stream that runs through there too. If, if you're going up Industrial Street, you'll go over this, probably a 10-foot culvert, 10-foot diameter culvert with a stream going through it, and the new entrance would be just beyond that.
Are there actual sewer pipes running through that sewer easement, or is it just on paper?
I think it's just on paper. We have talked to the sewer department and got clearance from them to, to do this, and if, if the, yeah.
Are there any other utilities running above or under the proposed lot that you're...
The only thing that we know of is the existing New England telephone building, which is on this lot right here, has a roof drain that runs over into that stream, so we're, we'd be putting that underneath of our road. We'd extend it over to the stream directly.
And, like, on the 1980 drawing that you had up previously with the old driveway, that driveway was, served all of those lots, is that, that was the understanding at the time? All of those?
Right, it would serve these, these back lots, which also, which don't have direct access to any other road. This Lot 8 that we're using as well, does have frontage on Industrial Road, but this road was necessary for these lots. With the new proposed layout, the prospective buyer, I think, wants to use the entire property, so they're going to just have driveways in there.
The lot to the west that's next to the paper road, the sewer easement, how were they intended? Were they intended originally, it was the understanding that they had access through that driveway to get to their property?
Right, when, if and when the city ever were to build a road in there, they would have access right here on the, on the corner.
Okay.
This was done, I think, in 1988.
And so how will they access that lot now?
They would now have frontage out onto Industrial Road.
How does that...
They would, they would have the, have the remainder of the street that's there.
Right, yeah, if you go back to the new drawing again, the proposed, that portion of that paper street's still there.
Right.
To, and that's Lot 13?
Yes.
That one, so, so lots, just to clarify, the four lots in question, 8, 14, 15, and 16, are today owned by one person?
Yes, one company, Rhett Lou.
Yep, and they're possibly going to be selling it to another individual or company?
Yes.
But they want them, okay. Understood.
Any other questions?
The paper road would still exist as a paper road, that's not being altered in any way?
Well, the, the part of the paper road that extends into the lots where it's not needed anymore is just being, is just going away. The paper road still exists here, as far as, like, the corner where it is here, but it would, it does extend into this property. This property is also owned by someone who owns property abutting it on the other side, so in theory, if they didn't want to build the access road from Industrial Road, they could go across their own property to, to access it.
But they would always have the access to the industrial road?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for Jeff? Any questions from members of the public? Boyd?
Unfortunately, Jane and Dan could not be at the meeting today, so they asked me to come in there instead. They have submitted, I believe you folks have all received, their concerns about the project. And I guess the way Jane and Dan look at this is if you envision yourself as a residential homeowner, that you just bought a lot, and a developer said, "I'm going to build this road in front of your lot, so you don't have to build a road. All you have to do is take your driveway off that road." Then the developer says, "Well, we're no longer going to build that road, but you need to build the road now from your lot, 100 and whatever, or 200 feet to Industrial Drive." So Jane and Dan feel like this is a cost shift on their standpoint. When Jane bought that land originally, there was supposed to be a road built for all of those lots in there. They certainly are not against a development, but they feel like that the result of this change is a cost shift onto them. They have to build a road, no matter where they build it, to a public road, they have to build a road now that they originally, when they bought the lot, did not have to build. So that's a pretty significant concern from their standpoint. So it's the cost shift. And that's why they were asking the planning board either, I think in the email that Jane sent to you, either to delay, to allow the parties to discuss maybe some type of resolution...
Examine the feasibility of actually building that road due to the stream and culvert and wet water running through there, so...
Yeah, I looked at the contours. I mean, I just was informed about this, so I haven't done a lot of detailed assessment of it. There is a stream channel, or it's a pretty significant depression that runs through there. I believe it is a stream. That being said, streams can be crossed with a simple permabed rule from DEP, and wetlands don't apply when you're crossing a stream, so...
You don't need Army Corps of Engineers or anybody to examine, no?
It's a permabed rule, it's an RPA permabed rule, so...
So...
As long as the culvert is no longer than 75 feet in length.
But if we were to approve this change, how would that change any legal obligation that developers have to build that road if they agreed to build the road before?
That's a good question. If the road is going to be built and down the road at some point, then that may not be an issue, right? But if they're building an access drive to that property out back there, what purpose would they have to build a road to Jane's property?
Sure, I'm just saying if there was no contractual obligation when that lot of, when that lot was purchased, and it was just kind of a, yeah, we're going to get around to building that road at some point, kind of a handshake type thing...
I don't know if I agree with that, because again, all those lots are multiple lots right out there, and the subdivision plan, which was developed in 88, had access. So when somebody buys a property, they're expecting that road access to be built by a developer or somebody. I mean, there's an inherent, you know, it's inherently thought that I'm going to have a road that comes in front of my property so I don't have to build another 300 feet of road. So I think that's what their concern is, so...
Yep.
Ann, did you have a comment?
Well, the current owner isn't the developer of that subdivision, was developed in, or the plan was approved in 1980, and that wasn't the owner who owns it now. So the owner who owns these lots didn't make that representation. It was the Waterville Area Industrial Development Corporation that...
Right, but there's, I think Jane and Dan's point is there's still a, there's a net cost to them with this decision. No matter who owned it before, there's a net cost to them, and that's what their concern is.
Well, I mean, there's a net cost to somebody at some point.
But this development has nothing to do with them, other than the fact that cuts the potential for a road coming in front of their lot.
Sure, but those lots could sit there empty for the next 300 years, and nobody would ever build a road.
They could. They could.
Did they have anything in writing saying that they had a road?
You've got a subdivision plan that they, when they bought the property, that showed that a road was planned for that, whether it gets built, when it gets built?
But each individual lot, somebody who owns a lot on that road would need to be the one to say, "Well, I'm going to build the road because I really want it, because it's financially feasible for me to do it so that I can build some development on it," right?
Or somebody sells lots out there and develops them and says, "Now I have to build a road, so it's going to happen to go by Jane's lot."
Yep.
We can do, we can second-guess each other as far as what could happen down the road, right?
Sure.
But the fact is, when I buy a lot, and it has, and I'm expecting it to have road frontage, so that I don't have to build 300 feet of road, and then something changes from when I bought it, that's a harm on me. You know what I mean? And again, I would equate it to thinking about like a residential. If I bought a lot for my house, and it was in a subdivision, and the developer sold it to another developer, which happens quite regularly, right, and they shift that road and make me build another 300 feet of road, that's a cost on me that I shouldn't have to bear, because first of all, I'm not one of making a change, but when I bought it, I bought it with intent that there was going to be a road in front of my lot. I think it's as simple as that.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm having a hard time trying to come up with the reasoning that somebody bought, you know, Lot 13 and said, "I'm going to buy this lot, and someone else is going to pay for that road that I'm then going to be able to use." That's, you know, that's the part that I'm having a hard time with.
Well, and I guess my concern with this theory is that if this plan was approved, you said 40 years ago, better than 40 years ago, and no one has built that road yet, I mean, at what point did they think that the road was going to be built?
I can't answer that question. I can't honestly tell you when Jane and Dan bought it, you know what I mean?
Right.
So it would be... So I'm going to relay the concerns, obviously, that's a pretty significant concern to Dan and Jane.
Boyd, is there a way to use the paper road in any way? That would be...
That area, that area where there is, where it shows the current paper street is all, appears to be, according to the contours, I haven't walked it, you know, but appears to be higher elevation than the deep gully that's there. So I don't suspect you'd have much for wetlands in area. In that area, I think on the other side, where their driveway is coming in, it's also upland, and you just got the gully in between that has a wetland and stream. So there may be a way to configure something to bring a road and kind of sweep it around, end up so that everybody benefits, you know, and still require a big, require a culvert and filling in that part of that gully anyway, in order to get that road constructed anywhere near the original paper street.
Yes. You have to come up to the microphone.
Okay, my name is Charlie Craig. I'm one of the two owners of this property. And we bought this property, there is no obligation to build that road. And he has nothing in writing. Do you have any kind of contract or obligation from anybody to saying that we're responsible for building that road? Do you have that in writing? So, I mean, this is all conjecture. He's saying they bought this lot with the assumption that somebody would build the road for them. This has all got to be documented in writing. If it's not documented, then we don't have the obligation to do this. We bought this property with no knowledge or any title searches that we had any obligation to build this road. So, you know, it's, if they want that road built, they can build it. Or they can, you know, the easiest thing to do would just be to connect, build a road from the property they own that joins it, which would be not through a wetlands and a lot cheaper. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Any other questions from the board? Okay. So we have a findings and facts, I believe, right, Ann? So we need to either...
But did write one? There's not a whole lot to it. I can give it to you if you want to go through it. I think that the reviewers were of the mind that the real review would come when the development is proposed.
Happens, okay.
But if you want to go through that, it's fine. Would you do this?
Sure. Oh, I have one. Thank you. Yep. Well, Tom had it. Okay, so...
I'm going to make a motion to read by number only.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Item number one, Jeff?
True.
Item number two?
True.
Item number three?
True.
Item number four?
True.
Item number five?
True.
Item number six?
True.
Item number seven?
True.
Item number eight?
True.
And item number nine?
True.
Okay, so I will need a motion.
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Oh, you're abstaining. Kathy abstained. Okay.
Five to zero with one abstention?
Yes. All right. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay.